I present the Legion to the flag of the United States of America and this is a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberative, and justice for all.
And I'll call the roll. Naomi Zabon?
Present.
Judith Garcia? Todd Taylor?
Here.
Council Giovanni Recupro? Council Leo Robinson?
Yeah.
Council Calvin Brown?
Here.
Council Damali Vidal?
I'm here. Did you get me right?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Council Melinda Baldonado? Council Ymir Rodriguez is absent. Council Roya Vizaneda, present. Council Angel Lopez?
Here.
Eight presidents, three absent. We'll now move on to the public speaking portion. Anyone interested in addressing the city council may come forward. They will have four minutes to speak. Please state your name and address.
Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Sarah Neville and I live at 40 Eleanor Street. I'm here today to share some of my thoughts about the discussion that we've been having around removing the Columbus, the Christopher Columbus statue from the plaza outside the police station. So first in background about me, I'd like to say my great-grandfather Rafael Valerio was born in the Calabria region of Italy. He immigrated with his family to upstate New York around 1901. Even though my mom had really strong ties to her Italian heritage and my family had a really strong conservative Catholic upbringing, I actually had never in my life heard that Christopher Columbus was supposed to be our Italian-American hero until last fall. So that's just an interesting tidbit. Second, I want to share some thoughts about the idea of removing statues and monuments in general. History is recorded in books and history is taught in schools. But on the other hand, statues and holidays, they're erected explicitly to honor someone and to say that we value their contributions to history and that they're a good person. They're not just put up just to make note of their existence. If I proposed to erect a statue of Osama Bin Laden in Chelsea, I don't think most people would be very excited about that. They'd say, no, he was an awful guy. And if I said, but we have to remember our history, we have to, you know, we can't forget that he existed, then you would just say, well, we can write about him in the history books and we can make sure that he's taught in school and make sure that we make documentaries out of him. Because there's no such thing as objectivity or neutrality in history. It's a subjective decision in the first place that something is even important enough to be written down and preserved in history. And it's an act by that in preserving something in history is an act that's done by someone in power. Putting up the statue of Columbus in the first place was never an objective and value-free decision. And so I don't think that we should be afraid of being subjective or too, you know, influenced by the times to remove it. The third thing I want to say is to my fellow Italian-American and Catholic community who might feel slighted by the statue removal. I think Italians have contributed a lot to this country, but this decision to make Christopher Columbus our hero was a very bizarre one. I propose, I think that we have a lot, I think that we have many better candidates for our Italian-American hero. For example, Francis Xavier Cabrini was born in Italy and the Pope sent her to New York City in 1889 to minister to the foreign downtrodden Italian immigrant community there. She founded dozens of schools and orphanages and hospitals during her long ministry. And she was actually the first American citizen to ever be canonized a saint in the Catholic Church because of all her good works. She's even known as the patient saint of immigrants. Unlike Columbus, Francis Cabrini has never been accused of rape, murder, or genocide. And despite Columbus's allegedly similar Christian missionary mission, Columbus was very much never canonized. And during his lifetime, he was actually often criticized for being a tyrant and incompetent. And Queen Isabella and King Ferdinand kicked him out of office and banned him from ever serving as governor because of those traits. So I think that it's a really stark contrast to the near-universal claim that Francis received against during her lifetime for service to American society and to immigrant communities. I'd happily join any efforts to construct a replacement monument to our Italian heritage in Chelsea, whether it's privately by a church or another organization or publicly by a city, if it were to honor some worthy recipient like Francis Cabrini or someone else, another actual role model. I just share Francis's example in particular to show that there are so many better candidates out there besides Christopher Columbus. And finally, the last thing I want to say is to the council here today. I know that some people are calling for replacing the particular monument near the police station with something to honor Massachusetts tribe or indigenous forerunners who lived here long before us. And I think that it's very right that our official city resources and property go towards recognizing the Native American peoples because they're so incredibly overlooked in our histories and our holidays and our monuments. And I look forward to the continued discussion around this issue and thank you very much for your time hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other speakers? Seeing no other speakers, we will now close that portion of the meeting. We'll now move on to communications from the city manager. We have the last week's reading, the second reading of from the city manager regarding the appointment of James Sullivan as to the Board of Assessors. This will require a roll call. Do I have a motion from the city council?
Yeah.
Counselor Judith Garcia asked that we have a roll call to approve the appointment of James Sullivan, interim assessor to the Board of Assessors. We'll now call the roll. Counsel Naomi Zabon?
Yes.
Counsel Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro?
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown? Give me a thumbs up or thumbs down. Counsel? Yep?
Yeah.
He's on. There you go. Okay. Counsel Damali Vidal?
Absent.
Oh, she's there. Counsel Vidal was there. All right, I'll say not. Counsel Melinda Vega, absent?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel Ymir Rodriguez is absent. Counsel Roya Vizaneda, yes. Counsel Angel Lopez?
Yeah.
We have nine in favor, two absent, zero against. Okay. Moving on, the next communication from the city manager is the communication with the year-end financial request. Dear councilors, I'm writing to request votes to address final end-of-the-year financial matters. The details are as follows. One, approval of PEG access FY21 budgets. As you may recall, last year, the city council adopted Mass General Law 44, Section 53, F3 quarters and established the PEG access and cable-related fund. All Comcast payments required by the 10-year Comcast renewal license are paid into this fund. Further, to expand monies from this fund on behalf of the three entities that rely upon this source, Chelsea Community Cable, the School Department, and the city, the city council must approve an annual budget for these funds for each of these entities. I am writing now to request the approval of the annual budget for each of these three entities so that they may expend these Comcast funds. The total requested FY20 budget for these three entities are as follows. Chelsea Community Cable Television, $251,250. School Department, $153,700. And the city, $130,000. The city will utilize its funds for translation services for continued fiber work in City Hall and to launch a pilot program to provide internet access for the economically disadvantaged residents. Details on these budgets are attached. Two, approval of the Community Preservation Act FY21 budget. Likewise, each year, the city council must approve the Community Preservation Act budget as adopted by the Chelsea Community Preservation Committee. As you will see, the proposed CPA FY21 budget reserved for the appropriation of 95% of the estimated revenues, with 10% allocated to each of the three sector reserve accounts and the remaining 65% being allocated to the budget reserve account. All of these accounts are subject to future appropriation by the city council based upon the recommendations from the Community Preservation Committee to fund specific projects. For the remaining 5% of the estimated revenues, the committee is requesting an appropriation for administrative expenses, which are expressly allowed by the statute. The CPA committee expects to utilize these funds to pay for a part-time administrator. Please note that the administrative funds can only be used in the fiscal year for which they are appropriated. At the end of the fiscal year, any unspent administrative funds will be transferred to the budgeted reserve account and available in the following year for funding of this specific project. I respectfully request your approval for the CPA FY21 budget. Item number three. Counsel Robinson?
I don't know if you want to read the, all the headings because there are actually 23 orders that will be coming up on the news.
Ask if you waive the reading?
If there are no objections, unless you want to...
There any objections to any councils having me waive the rest of the reading? Seeing none?
I'm moved to accept.
Can you, Mr. President, can you just read the titles?
Yes. So we had salary, number three was salary deficits funded by salary reserve transfers in a total of $66,254. The amounts will be auditing department of $18,500, auditing department unused sick bonus $1,500, purchasing department unused $350, treasures department overtime $75, parking department unused sick bonus $711, DBW administrative overtime $21,000, DBW snow removal overtime $6,140, library department sick buyback $135, DBW bills and grounds overtime $17,000. Deficits funded by free cash in a total of $195,153. The reauthorization of revolving funds, no funding required there, but they have Elder LaFears revolving fund $1,000, planned development tax title revolving account $100,000, public library revolving account $20,000, emergency management revolving revolving account $30,000, inspectional service revolving account $30,000, community schools revolving account $100,000. We have prior year expenses, no funding required there. And a donation of $500, I'm sorry, $100 that was donated by, from Ms. Nancy Massam to our city food distribution program. Again, the description of the accounts and the use and purposes are in your packet if you want to review them. We will be voting on all these matters next week. First order, first meeting will be, first reading will be tonight and the vote next week.
I'm moved to accept and file a communication with suspension. There's no objections?
Seeing no objection, we will, we'll spin a separate demand under suspension. We have a communication from Zachary Calhoun of 18 Congress Ave, Chelsea, Massachusetts. Members of the city council, my name is Zachary and I'm a resident of Chelsea, Mass. As a concerned resident and in the light of recent murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and the horrifying hanging of Keith Gully and many other stolen lives, I demand to see the reduction of funding for the Chelsea Police Department. Rather than invest in a system that has been founded on racist principles and has perpetuated the unnecessary deaths for so many Black people nationwide, I suggest we real- reallocate money towards building up and supporting Black, Hispanic, and Latinx communities that make Chelsea the city it is. The 2020 fiscal budget is planning to allocate over $12 million to Chelsea Police Department. I believe that this money could have a greater use being invested in education, healthcare, and countless other social programs at the benefit of Chelsea's Black, Hispanic, and Latinx communities. The city council must take a stance for racial justice by significantly defunding policing. Lip service isn't enough. Racist police violence just doesn't happen in other cities. It happens here in Chelsea too. In fact, Chelsea's demographics likely increase the potential of racist policing, both internationally and both intentional and subconscious. But with action, we can create change. The city council must stop investing such large sums of money into a system created to perpetuate racism and discrimination and fund what Black and Brown communities need to be safe and healthy. COVID-19 relief, housing, healthcare treatment, healing, cooperative businesses, community centers, community-led organizations, and projects. Sincerely, Zachary Calhoun, 18 Congress Ave. We have a letter from Rosa Reyes, 112 Hawkeon Street. The text of the communication is, seems to be the exact same as the previous. Is there objection to just accept and file since the community has a copy?
I'm moved to accept and file a communication on the suspension.
Okay. We have a communication from an Oscar Palacio, 960 Broadway, apartment 7, Chelsea, Mass. Again, the text of the email is the same as the previous read email. Is there an objection to accepting and file?
I'm moved to accept and file a communication on the suspension.
Mr. President, I don't have any problem with objections. I'm just confirming that these are all the same letters saying that they're requesting us to minimize the police budget.
That is correct. It's the same, it's, all three letters have the same text. It's just, it's a cut and copy.
Okay.
But the change is just a different name and a different person, but the body of the text is the same.
Okay, thank you.
We have the communication from the city manager, appoint Dr. Ivanis, 91 Veterans Road. To think that because of the time, this has already been...
Yeah, accept and file a communication on the suspension. Seven days passed and there was no comments back from this council when we got the appointment.
So this is regards for those at home, the appointment as a of, let me see, appointment of Dr. Ivanis to the position of Chief Procurement Officer and a waiver of residency requirement. We have a communication from last week from the city manager, dated June 15th. Again, a request or notifying, actually notification from the city manager and is intent to hire a Northeastern University graduate student, Chris Clemm of Bloxborough, Massachusetts, as a part-time summer intern. He's asking for, or stating that he is planning on to give a notice of a waiver.
Same situation beyond the seven days of this, except the file of communication on the suspension.
Seeing no objection? Okay, we have previous order moved to a second reading last week by Counsel Robinson and Counsel Brown. Request that the city council begin meeting with the Latimer Lewis Society, oh, sorry, Lewis-Latimer Society, Chelsea Black Community Public Safety Officials, the city manager, the city solicitor, and community members develop plans to address the unconscious bias and systemic racism, including in such discussions, the possibility of creating, among other remedies, in the office, in office of diversity and inclusion in the city, a permanent task force on racism, and a program for comprehensive and mandatory inherent bias training for all employees. Counsel Robinson, what is your wish?
Doctor shenanigans, see, under suspension, and I'll be very grieved. Now, there is a meeting being held tonight with the Chelsea Black community to talk about some next steps. I would be approaching the city manager to act quickly in advance of our community discussions to declare by executive order racism as a public health crisis to highlight the need for concrete steps to address structural racism in education, housing, public safety, healthcare, and other areas of society.
Any other councilors want to speak?
I do. May I speak?
Counsel Vidal?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would love to hop on this and sign on if possible. I know that there are a lot of conversations happening across the city and I want to commend my colleagues for bringing this forward. But I just want to remind us that I don't want the bulk of the work to fall on the laps of the colleagues of color. This is something that our administration should be grabbing by the horns and really driving. In order to address the systemic racism that exists, it has to come from the leaders of the community that actually have the power to address this. So I, I think it's great that we're bringing up the conversation and that we're listening to the Chelsea Black community and the young people specifically that have organized and worked hard on these demands. But I want to make sure that the ball and that the person driving this work is coming from the city manager and his staff and driving a lot of these initiatives home.
Okay. Any other councilors?
Yeah, can I speak, Mr. President?
Counsel Brown, you were recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleagues who rejoined in efforts and I'm bringing this motion before you. I think, you know, again, as we prepare to get into these discussions, I'm looking forward that we have a series of discussions and not so much of demand, but a really in-depth conversation with community folks of color. Obviously, community folks have been affected by the crime and by the brutality and injustices that we are stating here in this disorder. The more people at the table, the better. I've been talking to numbers of folks, I'm our city councillor, I'm the city manager, our police department. I mean, this is an opportunity for us all to pull together, put our hands together, work with the youth, work with the broker groups, work with all these organizations that's really, that's going to have to make a difference in us really getting some resource and some really significant effort of change in our community. That includes our education, our public health folks, our mental health folks. And I'm just looking forward to it. And as I spoke to you, Mr. President, I was asking regarding the order that I put in. We're hoping that, you know, under your recommendation that as in July, when City Hall starts to open, that we can invite other folks up and we can have collective series of conversations. And at the end of the day, hopefully, we'll be able to go back to the city manager and address these demands and these concerns. And hopefully, they'll be implemented where we can actually see significant change and progress on what we're doing here and keep moving Chelsea forward. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Seeing none? Next order. Order introduced by Counsel Brown in regards to that the city manager instructed Director of Public Works to paint the crosswalks at the following locations, William and Spruce Street, Wilson Way and Deacon Street, Admiral's Way and Captain's Row, Spruce Street and Second Street. Counsel Brown, what is your wish?
Got this order under suspension, Mr. President. Can I speak?
You may.
Yeah, so as we noticed, you may have seen, there's been an increase of folks using our parks here. In particular, this order speaks in the area of Mary O'Malley Park. And a lot of folks are walking with their families in Cross and Rhodes. And my colleague has enlightened me on the importance of the crosswalk. And these places where I, I noticed personally, and there's some others, but others that I didn't mention here are places like Spruce Street and Sixth where there's some construction going on, so I'm assuming that will be done later. But in the meantime, I like to address these locations for, to highlight the crosswalk where people are now trying to cross the streets to get to these locations up in the map, Mary O'Malley Park. And, you know, we just want to make sure that they have a safe passage. A lot of places that's highlighted in this order, William Streets, Spruce Streets, and Hamlet Square up in Captain's Row, these places, they have crosswalks, but they haven't been done in some time. And the paint, which is the white paint we're talking about, has been faded away. And, you know, people again continue to make their, not only their walking routes, but they're also their running routes due to the coronavirus and the pandemic we're experiencing here. People are trying to get some exercise. So I was just hoping that as the summer approaches, that we can get our DPW to do some maintenance on these crosswalks. Thank you.
Could be a question on Wilson's Way.
I actually think there might be a question on Admiral Way and Captain's Row because that actually may be part of the bill. It is not part of the maintenance, the other sections are. But the intersection of Admiral Way and Captain's Row is under the jurisdiction of the condo associations themselves. The rest of the intersections are street locations under the city. So I'm sure that they will be done. And I'm also sure that now that spring is basically into summer, that the DPW will be doing not only these crosswalks, but as tradition, they'll be hitting all the other crosswalks across the city.
Okay, so why don't we just make a quick amendment? Why don't we just write the one if you're sure that that one is under the trustees here? We can actually, I can have a letter sent to them directly.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Leo Robinson. Appropriate the FY 2021 Community Preservation Committee operating budget and motion is that the city council act on a report of the Community Preservation Committee on FY 2021 Community Preservation Budget in accordance to MGL Chapter 44B, Section 6. That the city council reserve for appropriation of following amounts of an estimated FY 2021 receipts as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Item one, $77,588 equal to 10% of the estimated revenues for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space. Line two, $77,588 or 10% of the estimated revenues for the acquisition, the preservation, and rehabilitation of restoration of historic resources.
Is that a late communication?
No, it is not. It's an order from the city.
Okay.
A, number three, that 10% of the estimated revenues for the acquisition
I don't have it.
creation and preservation and subject of community housing. Number four, 65% of the estimated revenues of the CPA budget go to budgeted reserve. Number five, 5% or $38,793 of the estimated revenues for community preservation administrative expenses. Counsel Robinson, what is your wish?
Actually, I'll leave it up to my colleagues. Actually, we read in the beginning of the meeting, all the money orders. There are 23 of them. I don't know if you want to read each one individual. Just move it to a second reading and if anybody has any questions, they can either reach out to me or the city manager. They have any questions on it?
One way first.
Yes.
Can we just like, since we're moving on as a second reading, just vote it up? This is one whole vote. Thank you so much.
He's asking, they all are second reading. What he's basically saying is ask everything to be moved to a second reading as a whole and waive the reading since they're going to be part of the whole, anyway.
Oh, because we got to vote on it individually.
Next week.
Perfect.
Okay, so we're moving all the money orders from Counsel Robinson to a second reading. reading. There is a packet with information. Any councillors wanted to find out what the, each of the individual, um, allocations are? It's in the packet, you can read. Furthermore, any questions can be directed to either the city manager or the Chair of the Finance Committee, Leo Robinson. Council Robinson, do you plan on having, uh, a committee on finance next Monday prior to?
Well, we're going to be here on Thursday night talking about things on the.
That will be the budget hearing, this is.
Well, this is all items that are next on the budget.
All right.
So.
We'll also be having a budget hearing this Thursday night, so if anyone had any questions on these transfers, we'll talk about them also. So the move, there's a motion to adopt, I mean, sorry, move the whole, the group of financial orders to a second reading under suspension. No objections? Seeing none?
So, yeah, no, so, so this will be brought up on Thursday, correct?
It'll, well, we're going to talk about the, we're having our last budget hearing-
Yep.
Uh, subcommittee meeting on Thursday. Um, I wasn't planning on having these matters on there, but if we have enough time, then these can be brought up. If not, we can have this, the subcommittee on finance can hold a meeting next Monday on just these orders.
Yeah, I think, I think we should go that route, because as we talk, uh, you know, you've already called the, um, post-budget hearing for Thursday night, and you say you want to keep that to two hours. And if you don't, I mean, it seems like we have to go through it real quickly now. I mean, one of the reasons why I was asking you to call that meeting is so we can have, there should be a lot of pressure that night. And if, if it's fair with the committee or with the council, I just prefer to have it maybe six o'clock before on next Monday night, you.
I second Councilor Brown's motion.
Finance, sorry, with the chair.
Okay.
So you want to meet on Thursday night at six o'clock, it's fine with me.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
Uh, the next order, let me see.
Only one motion, I don't think we are due.
We have a request that the Chelsea Licensing Commission consider reducing the renewal fee for liquor licenses given to, uh, the impact of COVID-19, brought by Costler Garcia and Costla Avellaneda.
We need, we need a vote on accepting late communication.
Yes, we do. Consular Cupro.
I oppose.
Okay.
I oppose a late communication.
Consular Cupro opposes the, uh, late communication, late order.
Can we do a vote call vote, I mean?
No.
Because the president said we can't have it.
Second reading. We have a late order by request, by, by Council Robinson, request that the city manager consider acting as busy.
I mean, at this point, if we're, if we're rejecting, let's be unanimous. Look, let's be fair here, yep.
Oppose it all. Yep.
Oppose it all.
Got it?
Be nice to have that approved as a motion next week.
So, uh.
What did Mr. Ambrosino say would be nice to get, what approved next week?
I said it would be nice to have that motion that was submitted as a late, approved next week. It was a motion to request that, uh, the city declare racism a public health emergency, and it would be nice to have the council on record for that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any public announcements?
All right, before you go into the announcement, i- is it possible that the council is going to have a copy of that order that the city manager spoke on so we can read it prior to that, um, hearing?
I'll, I'll make sure that Pacheco sends that email to you. Um, we do have a late communication from the city manager, and it's a resolution request for a park grant for the Mace Taunt Lot. I'm going to read it out.
Are we not rejecting all late communications?
No, we're rejecting late orders, not late communications. Any, any orders are objected, but this is a late communication, it's different.
Okay.
What's different from the one you just?
Wait, wait, one minute.
So I'm going to let the city manager, uh, speak on what the late communication is.
So, this is a communication regarding the park grant. These are the annual grants we do each year to do a park. This year, we're proposing to do Mace Taunt Lot, and I don't believe this requires two readings, it's just a resolution asking the city to, uh, uh, to move forward, uh, the council giving us authority to move forward with the grant application that's due on July fifteen. But out of, of excess of caution, I wanted to get it to you in case there was a concern that it needed two readings, but I don't believe it does, because you're not appropriating any money, it's just a resolution to allow us to submit the grant application. We do one of these, uh, parks every year, we're doing both parks this year, we just, we're finishing up Eden Park and O'Neil Park, so this is just the request to allow us to put a grant application in for the park program for the Mace Taunt Lot next year.
And I respectfully request that the city manager abide by the same rules councillors have to abide by. We all have to meet deadlines, so I oppose it.
It's the, it's a late communication, late communications are accepted, what aren't accepted is late orders. I want to make sure that the council is aware of the difference. Um, any orders that are not on the agenda are not, uh, accepted, but a late communication is whether it's a resident, city manager, or any entity. Um, this, there will be a resolution or an order coming up at next week's, the accompanied, uh, the communication is accompanied by a resolution that will be introduced next Monday, seeing that there is no time limit or requirement.
Good news.
Consular Lopez.
If this isn't, it's just to ask for a vote so that the city can go ahead for, uh, get a grant, why don't we, I think we should have.
It needs a resolution, which is an order, but it'll, we still have time to do it next Monday, and it will be introduced, and it's not something that needs two readings, because it's a resolution. So the city, the city can go forward and do it on Monday, but it's just a late communication that we're accepting. And the order will be drafted next week, I'll have it introduced for next week's meeting. Back to public announcements, Consular Garcia.
Well, before we do the public announcement.
Oh, sorry, hold on.
Just in regards to the budget, um, all, all cuts need to be in writing, the only three lines that we can cut from are salaries, operations, and capital.
Yes, Consular Robinson, this was, of course, would have been approached or discussed on Thursday, a reminder that on Thursday, we'll go over any proposed cuts to the budget, the format that will be, uh, followed, and the three items that one, any councillor can, um, address. And each department is salaries, capital-
And operations.
And operations. Consular Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have a few announcements. One is to address the request that I've been today, this will be a conversation that we will be having, um, next week during our meetings, so I apologize to my colleagues for submitting that late. Unfortunately, these things happen. Uh, but essentially, what we had in front of us was I've spoken to, uh, businesses here in Chelsea, especially in that area, who would like to have some sort of relief, a comprehensive relief package in terms of how this pandemic has affected. One of the key areas where we can be very strategic and helpful is by reducing the total cost of the renewal fee for the liquor licenses. So what I'm asking is for a request for the Licensing Commission to look into reducing that renewal fee for this year. And the reason is because, as you may know, many of these businesses who have liquor licenses were out of business for a few months, which means they were, who say, at its full capacity, this liquor license. So for folks who are listening right now, who are on board, if you're many councillors who would like to sign on to this petition, once I have the petition in order, if you like to sponsor it, let me know, and I'd be happy to interview, uh, once we present something, I know, uh, I mean, I can also sponsor it because he knows and also understands the, the importance of this order, and, and that's a substantial relationship, right? At least for this year, if you're interested in construction plans. Anyway, let me know if you're interested. Second announcement is there is a charter review meeting happening on Wednesday at Sixty Ten, so for residents who are watching, if you're interested in submitting your comments, and do so via email, and you can email me, or you can email our minister of investment via Facebook, it's also on email, it's also on the website. We will be broadcasting live via Facebook and via podcast channel twenty-two. You can submit your comments, uh, by noon tomorrow, and that goes as well for my colleagues, and also for all members of the charter. Um, you can go ahead and do that by noon, and we will be discussing section two tomorrow. Also, if there's folks who want to come personally, to make their comment like, like you see here today, you can show up, just make sure that you call six one seven four six six four zero six zero, again, that's six one seven four six six four zero six zero, give us a call, and let us know that you actually want to present yourself physically here, and we are welcoming thirty people at max. Um, so that's going to start our review. And the last announcement, I did this on behalf of my colleague, Councilor Brown and myself, uh, there is some anticipated construction happening, so there's upcoming construction happening, potentially, it's June twenty-ninth, it's still, you know, up in the hands, like, up, up, up in the air, but, um, it might be happening six twenty-nine, so for folks who live in, by William Street Broadway and William Street, Chestnut Street, there will be some construction happening, there will be some ADA bans, and, um, other, you know, that intersection, just the, the congestion in the area, to improve the pedestrian safety in the area. So, again, we're going to let you know in anticipation, but I just want to take advantage of this meeting to let folks know that by, uh, June twenty-ninth, we expect some construction to go on, but we're going to be alerting you once we get a fine again, if that helps. That's it for now.
Any other councillors?
I have a question.
Council Brown.
Thank you, I think Consular, um, Damali was up there, so I'll yield my time now, I'll come back.
Consular Vito.
Thank you, uh, Consular Brown and Mr. President. I just, I just want to talk about, uh, a lot of this race conversations that are coming up across this country. I hear a lot of folks using buzzwords and doing these, um, making empty statements. I'm not talking about anybody here, I'm just talking about in general. But I want to make sure, as a lot of people know, um, this work is what catapulted me into activism in the first place. And so I hear us talk about public health, naming racism a public health crisis, but then I think about our Health and Human Service Department and how we're so underfunded, and I wonder, how on earth will this health department be able to address this public health crisis if we were to deem it, which I believe it is? But I just want to make sure that if we're talking about it, that we're talking about it with intentionality, to actually address the issues that are before us, and not for the sake of appearing good on camera. I know my councillor, my brother councillor in Boston, Ricardo Arroyo, Consular Ricardo Arroyo is the one that brought this to the attention of Mayor Walsh, and he did it, but they have a different operation over there, like, they have the resources to invest in this. So I just want to make sure that we, when we're talking about the conversations that we need to have, that my couns, my brother councillors, Robinson and Brown, have, have brought up in, in, in having these conversations, that we're doing it with an actual intention to address these issues, and not just for the sake of glitter and gold.
Um, any other councillors with an announcement? Consular Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just want to encourage everyone, as you notice, today was the first day where we are allowed to have restaurants open, sit in, and also nails and hair salons and massage faces here, and get your toes done, your fingers done. So why don't we go out, support our, um, local businesses? This is a way that we can help start and stimulate the economy here early, and it can be our effort. So, um, please, go out. I went out today, some of those places were booming, I was glad to see that, I told them I'll be back, uh, but it's time for us to put our money where our mouth is and really go out and try to talk up our city. It's an opportunity for folks to go into the restaurants, go into the nail salon, the hair salon, the barber shop, and I think it's something we should really consider, um, blowing the bullhorn on, thank you.
If I may respond?
Um, I'm trying not to get back and forth, I know, I know, but, um.
It's appropriate.
I, I, hold on one sec, before you go there, I'm going to make one announcement. Uh, for those of you who may be, uh, paying attention, um, there have been some efforts locally, um, regarding the work along the Route One corridor. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to our city resident, Tony Hernandez, who, um, provided, uh, both the city and the state delegation some documentation, uh-
Hi. Am I awake, what's up?
Can we please mute?
What do you mean? A lice, it must be working on a pole.
Can we mute yourself?
Thank you.
Wait a minute, I, I want to make an announcement. Did I make an announcement?
Consular, Fatima, can we please mute Recupro at the moment? Thank you. As I was stating, the Mastod, as far as the, as, as a result of some lobbying from our local resident, state delegation, particularly the city manager and his staff, um, that we now have a hold on the project itself, and that is until some, uh, better dust mitigation measures are implemented. But more importantly, I know there were a lot of residents who were complaining about late night work. It is according to the letter that was sent to the city that they will no longer be doing any work beyond ten PM. So it's vital that everyone knows, and we ask our residents in that corridor to please be the eyes and ears of our community, because your vigilance is helpful. Um, if there's anything that you see, um, please send that information, and I'll let the city manager, at this moment, just give us an update as to what that letter to the city, um, included as part of some of the measures that Mastod has now implemented with its contractor.
So we are still going back and forth with Mastioti, but basically, they are going to require the contractor to do additional dust monitoring and noise monitoring, and have on-site, uh, anytime there is, anytime there is demolition work, both a person doing active monitoring of dust and a person doing active monitoring of noise, with the authority to shut the job down at any time. In addition to that, the city is going to be doing its own independent testing and have its own real-time testing of noise and, uh, dust, so that we can request that the project be brought to a halt if we believe through our independent testing, real-time, that, uh, the required allowances for both noise and dust are being exceeded. I will echo what, uh, uh, the council president said, one significant concession was that, with one exception, which I'll mention in a moment, they, the, uh, Mastioti has agreed that there will be no further work on the project between the hours of ten and seven AM. The one exception is when they're doing some of this, uh, specialized deckwork that once it-
Come on right now, I'll call you right back, why?
Can't be stopped, and that's going to take place over six, um, uh, periodic weekends, probably closer to the end of summer and near the fall. But with the exception of that specific bridge decking, where, uh, there's going to be no further night work from ten, after ten PM. So that's where we stand. The project is still, the project isn't completely shut down, it is shut down for any activity that would engage in demolition or would generate a significant dust. Uh, and that's still on hold until the city and Mastioti and our state delegation agree on these mitigation measures, but those discussions are continuing and should get resolved this
Consular Robinson, you mentioned earlier tonight, uh, today, that, um, there is a meeting to- Consular Robinson, you mentioned earlier tonight, today, that there is a meeting tonight being held by the Chelsea committee, Black committee. Do you want to follow up on that?
No, they're having a meeting. They're going to be presenting some things at some point to, I would hope, to council and to the city, to the city manager. And I think that these are not just words to be thrown out. These are going to be action steps taken along the way to make these things become a reality. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Any other announcements? Consular Cupro, you have an announcement? Seeing none, this meeting is now concluded. Thank you.
Announcement. I have. Said that I muted? No. Okay. I have an announcement. Can I say it?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I'm sorry if I, this is more, but I just recalled that the lights are shut down on Essex Speed and Congress and Highland and suffered for an hour. I don't know why, but the lights are shut. So they're not going to work. For the people, if they, because of that, I don't know what's going on, but they're going to be shut down. So don't worry, they're going to be turned back on. I don't know why they shut down now, but they are shut down. And the next public announcement is that I want to make is this. When the construction companies work on your street, as I spoke before with DPW, if you come and work on your street and you get a street cleaning, take it, appeal it. Because by the, the agreement they have with the construction companies that work in the street, they are responsible for cleaning. While there's construction on your street or any part of the city that's working, and you can appeal it. They're not responsible to pay. That's an agreement that they have with the city. So if you do receive it, you can add stuff, try to appeal it. And it will be because the construction company is the one that's cleaning the streets. Thank you. No more announcement.
Thank you, Consular Cupro. Seeing no further business before the council, this meeting is now adjourned.